Our manager's report.
And now we have sound.
Yeah, perfect timing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to ask Judy Gagnon if she could come to the podium and give her a report. Or are you bringing the whole team up, Judy?
I'm Debbie Depp-Dugess.
Oh, Deb? All right. All right. All right. Well, Deb, welcome. A great event.
I can come.
I can affirm it was a lot of fun.
Is this working?
It is working, yes.
So, yeah, we were asked to come before the council meeting last year and it didn't work out. So, we're here tonight to give you a rundown of the Cumberland Historical Society Scavenger Hunt that Judy and I organize and put on every year. We started in 2017 and have had one annually every year. Other than COVID 2020, we didn't have one. And we had it this past Friday night. And what it is, is a fun event that is open to anybody. We advertise it on Facebook and online and email all over the place. And anybody that wants to participate can put together a team. And a team can be anywhere from two people to roughly eight. It's however many you can fit in a car. And we charge a $15 fee per person. And that money all goes to the Historical Society for their scholarship fund. So, that's why we do this. We do it for the fun of it and to raise money for the scholarship fund, which will go to a really high senior that lives in Cumberland. So, I'll just give you a quick rundown of what the Scavenger Hunt consists of. Judy and I both grew up on Farwell Avenue here in Cumberland. We moved away briefly and we're back to stay. And we thought it would be a good way to share some of Cumberland's history as well as what's going on in Cumberland now with people who, you know, participate. So, we pick 10 sites. Sometimes there's more. This past week there were 11. And we send these teams on a crazy adventure for two and a half hours throughout the town of Cumberland. Any place within the borders. So, West Cumberland, Cumberland Center, Cumberland Foreside, wherever. But they have to stay within the town limits. And those 10 sites all have a clue or a bag of clues for these teams to find, which is usually indicated by some colored flagging that we put near the site. And then they have to find the bag with the clues in it, find their team's clue, and solve it to move on to the next location. All 15 teams go to the same places, but they're all on a different track. They go in a different order. We scramble them, so it's all fair. So, we usually have 12 teams. This past week, we had 15. So, I believe we raised about $825. There were, I think, 55 people that were registered prior to Friday night. Judy and I try to make it fun. We tell them right up front, "There is no million dollar prize like on TV." You basically get bragging rights. We do give them a little, the winning team, a little token, but it's nothing special. And we try to get everybody to not be too competitive. We want them to be able to go to all 10 sites so that they can learn a little bit about the town, whether it's something historical or something that's current or meet somebody new. We do an interactive thing that has been very popular. So, the last couple of years, we've increased that. I'll just tell you really quickly. This year, we highlighted Cumberland's treasures. We don't always have a specific theme. It usually evolves into something and then we go, "Oh, the theme is schools or farms," or whatever. But this year, we did. It was Cumberland treasures. And those treasures aren't necessarily physical things like this podium. They're usually people, places, events, something like that. So, our esteemed colleague over here, Bill Shane, was nice enough to participate with us this year. So, one of the locations that the teams went to was his house. At the same time, we honored the Sweetser family because they've been in town longer than the town's been here. And they've been, you know, generation after generation. They've been so dedicated to the town in various, in assorted ways. So, Connie and Greg and Rick and Evan and the rest of the family were all honored. We did give them a plaque from the Historical Society thanking them for their dedication. But each team, when they went to the Apple Barrel to see them, also took a little token of our appreciation, whether it be a plant or a thank you card or whatever. We had those things set aside for them. And as a fun point of all this, Judy developed this program a couple of years ago that has really made it a lot of fun. In order for us to score the teams easier than in the past, at every site, they're required to take a picture of their team. And each team is assigned a color and a number and they wear bandanas and that's how we know who's who. But they're required to take a selfie with whatever. So, we have a lot of pictures of Bill Shane.
This is gonna be bad.
Bill Shane with these team members. And every place they go. And they're texting them back to Judy's phone, which literally overheated Friday night. And she puts together a slideshow so that when they come back at 9:30, everybody has to be back here at 9:30, she has the slideshow rolling so that they can see the pictures of all the teams and all the places they went. We give them a brief rundown of the clues that were sent out and explain them in case people had trouble understanding them. So, anyway, Judy has this.
I just also let them know Ron Kopf was.
Yes. Ron Kopf Senior this year was also a very willing participant. We sent them to his, I'll tell you all the sites. We sent them to his house so that they could take a picture with him and his auto collection. We also highlighted, highlight people that aren't living any longer. We highlighted Grace Hutchinson, who lived on Farwell Avenue for years and was a reporter and photographer for the Portland Press-Herald. And her son Ralph and daughter-in-law Karen live in the Brunel Family Homestead on Blanchard Road. So, they had to go to the Historical Society. They found out information in a display there about Grace Hutchinson that was supposed to prompt them to go to Cumberland Common to the Gazebau, which is dedicated to Grace. And then from there, they were sent to the Hutchinson's house to meet Ralph and get their next clue. So, each year, we highlight different people. So, Bill, Ron, the Sweetser's, and Grace were this year. And the other sites, I'll just tell you really quickly, were Rachel's on the Green at Valhalla, Ron Kopf's house at Five Scones Road, Sunflower Farm, where they were able to play with the baby goats, Graphic Sign on Middle Road. We almost always end up sending them to the Historical Society building, but there's usually a different interaction they have to complete. The Gazebau at Cumberland Common, the Homestead on Brunel's Homestead, Sweetser's Apple Barrel. They went to the police station to meet Otto, our new K-9 officer. But at one point in time, I have to tell you this, they got a call that Otto had to go on. And his handler was very kind without us having to tell anything. Put a nice little sign on the door that said, "Otto had to go on a call, but please take your picture with the sign instead." And it was really, really awesome.
We were driving down Tuttle as the police cars were coming up Tuttle. We got the picture with the sign.
Oh, good, good.
I have the picture.
Yeah, yes. And then Bill's house and Rockridge Preserve on Harris Road were this year's sites.
And just briefly mention the extra credit.
Yes. We also have a list of things in the packet that they're given. They're given a packet that has a bunch of knowledge about Cumberland history. A street map of Cumberland, cemetery map of Cumberland, pamphlet that's got the list of nature trails, just information that could be helpful to them, but might not be depending on where we're sending them. Because not everybody grew up in Cumberland or even lives in Cumberland now. So, all those things are in there. And we also, every year, have a list of 10 bonus items that they can opt to do or not. And those bonus items oftentimes end up being the most fun because, as I understand it, one of them this year was "We all fit." So, they have to show their team all fitting into some tight space. And Team Tie-Dye, who are our repeat contestants, had a picture taken inside the front closet at Bill Shane's house. And then my daughter and one of my sons and my daughter's boyfriend were a team. This was the first year they had done it. And I didn't know this until after everything was over and Judy was showing me the pictures. They went to my house and got in my shower and took their "We all fit" picture. So, some of the pictures that you'll see on the slideshow Judy's gonna show you now aren't necessarily at a site. They might be completing one of the special items. Do you need me to tell them what they are?
No.
No, okay.
Hey, Deb?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes, yes.
We have to know. How did our chairperson do?
Him?
No, no.
Oh, 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 oh.
Not so hot.
Did well. Number one.
You don't have to say.
We had a lot of fun. We brought the fun.
I was thinking you said manager.
Brought the fun.
They did well. Everybody did well, really. Everybody went to all the sites they were required to go to. There's always a team that's a problem team.
Kathy Ryan.
People, no, no, no. Some people have trouble following directions and we're not all the, we don't all think the same. For example, I'll give you this mic. You tell me where you'd go if, well, because I already told you the sites. But this is a picture of the cast of Friends. Jennifer Aniston standing in the middle with two yellow arrows pointing to her. This was a clue for our first sight. They were supposed to go to Rachel on the Green. Rachel's, Rachel Green is her character's name. We did have one team that went to the Historical Society. And when they checked in, you know, we have charts on the wall that we're keeping score on as they go places. I realized they had missed their first three stops, so they're all messed up. So, I called them and said, "Where are you? Where have you been? How did you get there?" Everything worked except for, "You shouldn't be there. You should be at the Historical Society." So, what we did was, their reasoning was, "Oh, yeah, that's Friends. That's Jennifer Aniston." Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So, we went to the Historical Society. Because, "Oh, well, the Historical Society is Friends with the Prince Memorial Library." Okay. So, I followed that up with, "Stay on track. When you get your last clue that says you're done, you're not. Just call me and I'll reroute you." So, that's how we handled that. One other last thing I will say is, of the 10 items we gave them to do for extra credit, this year, we had a special one that Judy told them at the beginning. We requested they all participate in if they would please. And Judy and I made signs of encouragement. Our dear friend Pete Bickmore, who lives on Crestwood, has been battling cancer and recently got some news that wasn't great. And he really needed to pick me up. So, we had the teams pick up a sign. We had them here in the back of the room. So, when they left and they started their hunt, they each took one with them. And Judy's husband had put them on stakes and they were told to bring a hammer. So, they went to his house and put them on his lawn. And I was impressed that they all knew enough to point them towards the house so he could see them instead of towards the road. But you will see in the video some of those. And then at the end of the video, Pete did a video and sent it to us thanking us. So, that's at the very end. So, thank you. Oh, before or after the video, should we?
After.
Okay. We're good.
Judy'll show that. Hopefully, this'll work. Right, Kelly?
Tech support. Okay, we can skip that part.
So, you'll never know where these are gonna pop up.
In case you couldn't tell from the pictures, Bill Shane actually wore his lederhosen for the event and we appreciate your good support.
I didn't realize there was gonna be this much abuse, though.
Just so you know, Bill, I'm going on a road trip in August and September out west and Flat Bill's going with me.
Awesome, thanks.
Thank you so much.
Okay, and that's all I have.
If it makes you feel any better, I think I have the exact same lederhosen outfit. Sometime we should wear them together.
Again, thank you so much for putting that event together. It really was fun. I don't know if you could totally tell in that first picture, but it's quite the mix of generations and folks that have lived here a long time and others. Clearly, we brought our littles along and they had a blast. We did have to end a little early because we had some sixth graders at a sixth grade dance, but they would not let us finish until we had put that stake in Pete's lawn. So, that was top priority. So, thank you for all the work and the whole crew that was there. It was really well done and a lot of fun.
Just a quick shout out to the Police Department, too, for, they knew where all the clues were and were very supportive of the event, so we appreciate that.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Next is public discussion. Public discussion is for comments on items that are not on the agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Rebuttal comments will be limited to two minutes. Public discussion topics may be brought up again under New Business for further council discussion. Is there anyone here this evening? Please go ahead.
Good evening to all. I'm Carolyn Small. I'm here representing the Cumberland Historical Society Part Two. Our chairperson, Curtis, was supposed to be doing this, but his wife is ill and so they decided that I look better in pink than he did, so here I am. I've been a member of the Historical Society for 35 years. I was two when I joined. So, just a brief, a brief little blurb about that. For 154 years, the Historical Society building was at 4A Blanchard Road. It was a schoolhouse that was established in 1853, the bricks of which were fired in a brickyard behind what is now Prince Memorial Library. So, in essence, the building came back home. So, after, with the move, after three years with all of our artifacts in storage, one year of unpacking, and we are still doing that. We are still cataloguing. We are entering, we've kind of come up to current times. We've got a program where we can put all of our artifacts in a database and we're organizing. We are at a point to have an official dedication on, and I'm here to extend an invitation to the members of the council and to the entire town of Cumberland. This is your town. It is your Historical Society. To attend the dedication on June 17th from 10:00 to 2:00, the official dedication ceremony will be at 1:00. We have speakers. We have cupcakes, hopefully music. Don't know about that yet. So, please, everyone, make time in your very busy summer schedules to attend this, this event. We appreciate it. We appreciate your support. The council and the town has been very supportive of the Cumberland Historical Society and I thank you kindly for that. And like I said before, this is your Historical Society. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carolyn. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to comment on something not on the agenda? And just state your, your name and your address.
My name is Stephanie Guio. I live at 290 Range Road. And I have, over the, I've lived, born and raised here in Cumberland. Over the last many, many, many years, I've watched so many car accidents at the intersection of Route 100 and Range Road. And I know there's a lot in the works right now on intersections and reworking them. And I guess my concern is, I mean, just this year alone, there's been two accidents that I've seen. And I know, I don't have the numbers. I meant to get the numbers, but I don't have them as to how many accidents. I can guarantee there's at least five accidents there each year. Why hasn't anything been addressed with that intersection since maybe, I think it was like 15 years ago when they lowered the level of the hill so you could see better at the intersection? Is there a reason that one safe intersection with a light already takes precedence over an intersection that has led to fatal car accidents?
I can answer that a little bit. We have been working with the Department of Transportation as, that is a state-marked road, state-numbered road. Chief Rumsey has also been in touch with them. We've been in touch with their traffic engineer. If you drive out there, you'll see that they do have, they have put new warning signs out. I know.
And there was just an accident like Saturday.
Yeah, right. And the reason for some of those accidents are all, all over the place. They're perplexed as well, why so many so quickly in the last few years? That is, that is fast becoming a high crash location. And DOT takes those very, very seriously. We, myself and the chief and the Police Department will be working with DOT to try to figure out what's going on. Is it just the configuration of where the, where J-Bro this comes out, where, where Range Road comes in and where, you know, Route 100, the speed of that traffic is just too fast? And people are just not able to react when people try to dart across or, or pull out or whatever they're trying to do. So, we are, we are taking, we have a very pretty thick booklet now of accidents. Some, some are minor and lately, they've been very serious. The one this weekend was serious and everybody had to be transported. So, I think the chief told me that, I think, everybody was okay. I mean, okay in the sense there were no fatalities, thank goodness. So, we are, we are taking that seriously. I'm glad you, I was gonna mention it under New Business later on because we are talking about a lot of intersections around town. I don't know what we can do there other than lowering the speed limit and I'm hoping they will help us lower the speed limit right there because it is a straightaway. And outside of, the last time we asked them to help at Skill And outside of, the last time we asked them to help at Skillen Road, they recommended a four-way stop sign. So that was a little bit head-scratching for most of us and that's why we're looking at the roundabout now. So we, we're not disregarding that. I want you to know it is on our list and we are looking at it and thank you very much for bringing it up because it is a very important issue to us.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steph.
I'm Kathy Wright on Skillen Road. I just wanted to bring up a couple of things regarding, I know there's a meeting on the roundabout this Thursday in West Cumberland and thank you for doing that and I'm hoping everybody comes. It's not just West Cumberland folks. It's the whole town because the whole town has to, a lot of them go through there, but also is gonna have to help fund it, I would imagine. So I guess I just wanted to make sure that this roundabout, if you go ahead, is bigger than the one in Falmouth. That Falmouth roundabout, which is great for people coming off Middle Road and Wood Road, is too small for big trucks. There's a lot of trucks that, that have difficulty. In fact, they put those great big orange, orange barrels, so people kind of stayed away from. Anyway, it needs to be bigger than that if you're gonna go ahead and, and do it. Personally, I think a stop sign, I'd rather have it the way it is than a roundabout. That's just me, but anyway. If you do go ahead, make it bigger or it's no sense in doing it because it's a lot of truck traffic that goes down through there. It comes onto Skillen Road and then it goes down Blanchard Road or it goes directly on, on Gray Road. So it's a lot of, a lot of truck traffic. The, the other thing I'm sure you'll address, town manager, is the cost to the taxpayers of Cumberland because we've got to ante up something on this roundabout and I just want Cumberland taxpayers to be aware of, you know, how much skin they're gonna have in on the game. So that's just a reminder to kind of, there'll be a lot of questions, I'm sure, on Thursday's meeting. I just want you prepared for it. That's all. Those are my concerns. Thank you.
I just want to not disappoint you with Thursday's meeting. It's really the first step in the process we're going through with the state and the Federal Highway Bureau. So it's, it's going to be more diagrams, more explanation, but they're not going to get to that level until we actually get funded as a project, until they select us. And that will probably be until later on this year.
Right. My, my understanding was from a meeting that I went to a year or so ago, was it about a million dollars that Cumberland would have to put into the pot?
That is, that is correct. Through, through our TIF funds, not through the general fund.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you. I just, just to add on to the Historical Society, the class of 1965 Greeley Institute girls did that. In 2019, we thought we would ace it and we came in dead last. Everybody's got an opportunity.
Anyone else? Yep. Go ahead.
Is this a good time to talk about the intersection of Skillen and Blanchard? Or should I wait until at you get, till you get to that point on the agenda?
So.
Which is under legislation and policy. It's the.
Yeah, so you should wait till that agenda item.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep. All right. So moving to legislation and policy, 23-051, "To hold a public hearing to consider and act on amendments to Chapter 48 Coastal Waters of the Cumberland Code as recommended by the Ordinance Committee." I think, do we have our?
Rick, are you gonna speak on behalf of the chairs here?
Good evening. I'm, I'm Rick Thompson, Chair of the Coastal Waters Commission. We have been, we have an incredible demand for increased access at Broad Cove Reserve, as you can imagine, especially when it comes to, to additional moorings and, and access to, to the waterway through, through the reserve. And the, the commission has had a number of different discussions about how we can do that and do it in a way that, that we're not compromising safety. And we kicked around a number of ideas. The first initially started out with the idea of perhaps having several town-owned dinghies down on the water where people could access their boats through the town dinghy, bring the dinghy back to the float and, and then go, you know, go on their way or bring their boat back to the, the float with the dinghy and go on their way. And the more we, we kicked that around, the, the, the more concerns we had over safety. And also if you have a keel boat at low tide, you're not gonna get to the float and we don't want to damage the eelgrass in that particular area. So we, we kind of set to the side the idea of a town-owned dinghy, although we have kind of written in, into some of the changes in case, in case we want to, to do that in the future. We are proposing that we expand the, the number of mooring permits from 38 to 48. We're to expand it by 10 additional moorings. We are really challenged down on that, on, on that float in terms of the number of dinghies that we already have attached there with the 38 moorings. So we're, we, we really feel that we can only allow five of those additional mooring holders to have dinghies on the float. So we would propose that of those 10 additional new mooring permits, that 10, five of those would have ability to attach a dinghy to the float. Five of them would have to store their, their personal watercraft, whether that be a kayak or, or a paddleboard or canoe or whatever, would be stored on, on land. That's not an ideal situation, but, but nonetheless, it really, we're just, we're limited by, by the facility that currently exists there as well as quite a bit of concern on the part of the commission for safety issues as people go back and forth and enter in different sea conditions and, and also weather conditions. We're also have some language included in, in, in the proposed ordinance changes that would centered around the lottery for personal watercraft storage so that going forward, we, we would only have one applicant per household eligible for, for the storage space as opposed to multiple applications today. If there are additional spaces over and beyond that, other, people can put the, put their names in twice. And then lastly, if, if the town should decide to build onshore some, some dinghy racks and other storage facilities, we would, we would consider the possibility of, of adding additional moorings. But that is really kind of dependent upon designating some space for that, for those dinghy racks and also the funding for that as well as making sure there are no conflicts with the land trust. But there are provisions in this, in the proposed, in the language we're recommending that would allow that kind of activity in the future. But it would be a, it would really be something that would be futuristic as opposed to, to something that would be done immediately. The long-term solution here is really an expansion of the float system. And the commission has reviewed plans to do that. We have permits or in, in, in process of being approved with DEP. We hope at some point they will approve that and, and we can then refer that to the Finance Committee of the town and to you folks as, as council members to, to determine the priority of, of funding that. But that ultimately is the, is the long-term solution down there. We think some of these changes will provide at least some interim additional access on the part of residents to Broad Cove Reserve. Any questions, comments?
Madam Chair, last week we met with Mr. Thompson and the police chief about the changes. The Ordinance Committee, as in we, met with Mr. Thompson and, and the chief and went over all the changes. We asked all our questions. They had common sense answers. And so I would just say that we support the recommendations, especially if it gets more people out on the water.
If I had one clarifying question or it just wasn't clear. So the, today we have a rack for personal watercraft and that has how many spaces on it?
We have, we have racks out on, on the floats for that. That's really where the lottery situation comes in. I can't tell you off the top of my head how many spaces are, but they're quite a few.
So today, that's like a totally separate lottery for the personal watercraft? So is it gonna be like the five mooring folks will get first five and then it'll be a lottery for kind of folks that don't have boats just for their personal watercraft? Is that like the order of operations?
So my understanding, and Bill, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but the, the second five spaces are for people who will be self-conveying but are not going to be able to store. So we'd be saying, you'd be putting your, conceivably someone will be putting their kayak or their very lightweight dinghy in the back of their pickup truck or on their Subaru and then conveying it down to the dock and getting them there and back themselves. And then if we are able to budget for additional land craft storage in the future, they would have the option of storing that.
Got it. Okay.
On-site at Broad Cove.
Got it. Okay, that is helpful. Thank you. So it is like day of, like you bring it down and then you're just going and coming, but you're not storing your?
No.
Got it. Okay.
Or we could encourage collegiality among the dinghy owners and encourage them to share rides back and forth or perhaps even joint ownership in a dinghy.
All of those sound like great options.
That's for them to work out, not, not for us to legislate.
Yep. Okay, that's helpful. I, I wasn't sure if it was taking away or if we needed additional on-land storage, but that is not what this is doing.
No, no. And so I, if I may. So Rick was wonderful with his kind of putting it into a box and explaining this. I think that I'd also like to mention that we really went through the logistics of all of this, particularly with the question of do we want to invest in town-owned dinghies? And so one of the things, and we know the demand for additional moorings is very, very high. The waitlist has been pretty stagnant over the past couple of years. And so the, the one issue with kind of those town-owned dinghies is that the minimum that someone would have to row is 1,500 feet, a maximum of 4,000 feet, which is almost three-quarters of a mile. And you're going there and back and then you also have to return the town-owned dinghy to the dock. And if you're at half tide or more and you have a keel boat, like Rick said, you have a really, really short window, right? And so as we were kind of unpacking the logistics of the town-owned dinghies, it didn't make a lot of sense, plus with the safety and then also the fact that our harbor masters don't have a boat. So if for any reason one of the town-owned dinghies, maybe someone didn't tie it up properly and, you know, it kind of went off and landed in Falmouth, we wouldn't necessarily have a place to get that dinghy back, right? And so the logistics just didn't really work super well. And so with that and kind of that larger desire to add additional moorings, we sort of decided that five slots could go on the dock and for those individuals that really want to have a mooring and are willing to, you know, take their kayak or blow up their paddleboard, at least they have an option to do that versus just sitting on the waiting list for additional months or, you know, years, depending on how long it takes to get that larger float set up. Is that, is that a fair assessment?
It is.
Thanks.
And my question, I appreciate that, Tig. So the, the idea though, long-term would be that we still have a pretty long waiting list, right? And this is kind of the first step to alleviate some of that pressure on that waiting list? And that the ultimate goal would be to increase float space at some point with DEP's approval and others, right?
That's right, Mark.
Okay. And then after that, to get more on-float storage for those individuals, maybe you release another 10 or you, and so maybe the folks who started with having to schlep their dinghy out there could then get on-float storage for their, and then you could roll in another five or something over time, it sounds like?
Either on-float or, or tie-up.
Okay.
Off a new, off a new float.
And what, what's the timeline for, do you happen to know for DEP to get additional float space? I just don't, I don't know much about it, so.
It has taken incredibly long period of time. Bill, do you have any update on?
We should have approval this year, but then, then we would get in the queue for a small harbor grant program to see if we could qualify for additional grants for the additional tie-up space. So that's, that would be hopefully next year.
Okay.
I'm fully supportive of this. I think we're a victim of our own success and the, the demand certainly has shown that. And what we really need is, is finger peers off the, the main float and I hope that we address that in our application as making it large enough so we can accommodate some future finger peers in there and, and kind of get some of this backed-up demand taken care of.
Yeah, the demand for water access, whether it be in Cumberland, Yarmouth or Freeport or even Falmouth is incredible right now. And everyone has a significant waiting list and we're trying to do our best to try to accommodate as many residents as possible and still be safe.
Can you remind me what the waiting list currently is? I remember it being.
Really depends, Mark, on, on the turnover of, of the existing moorings. I think we had, of the 38, we had three people who gave up their moorings. So we had, it's not a very big turnover. And as you can imagine, given the desire to be on the water during this short summer that we have, they're probably not gonna turn over very rapidly, I wouldn't think, unless we have a very severe recession, which hopefully we don't. But that's typically the time when you see the, historically, some of the biggest turnovers in some of the mooring fields, particularly in Falmouth and other places.
Are there questions from the council? This is a public hearing, so are there any questions or comments from the public?
How long, how many people are on the waitlist?
Can you repeat the question?
How many people are on the waitlist? I believe last count it was 47. So it's a very significant number.
We have another question.
Yep, if you have a question, just pop up.
How, how does it work with the, the mooring permits? Are they indefinite or is there a time limit? Like if I were to get a mooring permit, does it last for a year or 10 years or?
It's a one-year permit, but once you're, once you have a, have a mooring out there, as long as you continue to renew it every year, you will have, you'll continue to have a mooring. So there's no grandfathering or anything like that.
Kind of like first rate or refusal every year.
Yeah, which is pretty consistent with other, other harbors in, in and around coastal Maine.
I just wondered if there might be a benefit to putting a five or 10-year limit on it so that it would get access to a wider variety?
Yeah, we actually have had some discussion amongst the group about that. The challenge becomes if, if you, let's say for example, you've had a mooring there for five years. You've got $1,000, $1,500 invested in the mooring and you have a boat and that sort of thing. And then all of a sudden they told, you can't do it this year, maybe next year or the year after. It gets to be a very difficult decision to make. And, but it's, it's a, it's a real challenge because we want to try to provide as much access as possible for as many residents as we can. But it's just, there's, you know, there's some significant safety issues around all those dinghies tied to that float, especially if your, your dinghy is four dinghies out and half of them are full of water and some of the inflatables aren't, aren't pumped up. It's really, it's really challenging.
My ex-husband and my kids run a boatyard.
Judy, can you just come up to the microphone just because folks that are watching at home can't hear you?
My comment is that my ex-husband and, and my kids run a boatyard in Yarmouth and it's not uncommon for, in a marina. So it's not uncommon whether whoever owns a boat of any size to have to get in a queue for either a mooring space in the town or a dock space in a marina. So I was just thinking that a time limit shouldn't be, all towns might not have one, but it shouldn't be that uncommon for somebody that owns a boat to know that they're not guaranteed a spot where they want it every year. You know, they, they might have to play the roulette game. Just a thought.
One additional, I have one additional question and maybe this was answered, but for those new 10 moorings, are those individuals or families or whoever, are they, are they taken based on a lot? are they, are they taken based on a lottery? Or are they taken based on time, how long they've been sitting in the queue?
Based on time they've been in the queue. There's a, there's a specific order based upon when they made their initial application.
Okay.
Other questions or comments from the council? I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll jump right to it. I move to amend Chapter 48 Coastal Waters of the Cumberland Code as recommended by the Ordinance Committee.
Second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Right, thank you so much.
23-052, to hold a public hearing to consider and act on amendments to Chapter 170 Medical Cannabis Registered Caregiver Licensing of the Cumberland Code as recommended by the Ordinance Committee. So I noticed, number one, we're, we're changing all references to marijuana to cannabis. And then I think the biggest is really looking at our renewal application process and, and streamlining that. But I will open to the, anyone from the Ordinance Committee, Shirley, if you want to.
If you remember, when we passed this ordinance, we asked that the renewals be done on a yearly basis, based on when their application was passed, because we did not know how many applications we would receive. And if we got inundated with 50 applications that all had to be done at the same time, that wasn't going to work for the town staff. This change was actually brought to us by our town clerk, who said, we have four applications, we can do them at the same time every year, and then the applications will be good for a year, for that year. If someone should come in in August and apply, that, their application would still expire with everybody else's application. It's just the cost of doing business, I suppose. We also asked that it's, although it, it wasn't mentioned when we took a first look at this ordinance, but Mike and I both agreed that we wanted to make sure the police chief and the fire chief had input. You'll notice that on the ones we've renewed already, the police chief and the fire chief did have input. We just wanted that codified so that it actually happens, that it's not a once over. It is required by state law, but as a decision-making body here, we thought it was important for us to know if there had been any local complaints. And that's about it, other than number changes and.
Yep.
I guess I had one question, so you answered my one, which was if someone came in kind of after that date, like on August. What about the ones, like, are the ones that we just renewed, are they, did they just have, I'm trying to think when their date was, if that just worked, or if their kind of current term will be like a 13 month to get them onto that schedule? Or are they, how's that?
I think the end is March 30. I can't remember.
Yep.
And so they're, they're good for a year. They're good until the next.
Next cycle, yep.
Okay.
I think it's March 31st.
Okay, because we just did both those in April. Okay, so that worked. Okay, cool.
I had the same question.
It's May 31st, but they'll, they'll be fine, I think.
Okay, so those will just run until the start of the next term?
Yeah, it doesn't start till June 1st. But they have to have their applications in 60 days ahead of time. So the clerk and can go, and the code enforcement officer can go through their processes. And we will know well ahead of that June 1st license, whether or not they're going to receive their renewal.
Any other questions from the council? It's a public hearing, I open it up to any questions or comments from the public.
We thought we would be inundated with all these applications and then it, and then recreational use became legal. And now 25% of the medical marijuana growers are going out of business. And I think that matches up with what's happened in town as well.
Madam Chair, I'll give you a motion if you're looking for one. I move to amend Chapter 170 Medical Cannabis Registered Caregiver Licensing of the Cumberland Code as recommended by the Ordinance Committee.
Second, Madam Chair.
All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. 23-053, to hear a report from the Finance Director regarding second and third quarter financials. As I mentioned, the Finance Committee met prior to this meeting, so I will throw it over to our Chair of the Finance Committee, to Tia Helene.
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Chair. So yeah, we did, we had a meeting, a Finance Committee meeting at 6:30 today to talk about second quarter and third quarter 2023 financials. So we operate on a, on a fiscal year as opposed to a calendar year. So our first two quarters are really from June of 2022 to December of 2022. That's the first two quarters. So we're going to be focusing pretty much now on October of 2022 through March of 2023, calendar year wise. That'll be our, our quarter two and quarter three financials. Helene did a great job in explaining kind of where we were in 2022, based on what we've budgeted versus where we are, and compared that to the first, I guess, second and third quarter of 2023, just to give a comparison. So with that, I will pass it over to Helene to kind of walk us through where we are, if she's able to do that.
Good evening, Helene de Bartle Mayo, Finance Director. So since quarter two and quarter three kind of mirror each other, where quarter three, quarter two went through December and quarter three goes through March, we're, I'm going to start us through quarter three, just to give us where we are as of March 31st. So before I start the quarter, or the first slide I wanted to bring forward to you is, so we do two tax collections per fiscal year, one's in September, one's in March. So as of March 31st, our tax collection rate was 97.8%, which is two tenths of percent less than it was the year before at this time. Knowing that March 15th is when the tax bills are due, it's, we're, we're seeing a very good trend. I will bring to you where we end up at the end of the year and see where we ended. But so far, we're still trending in a favorable collection rate. So for Q, for Q3, as you can see, our overall, our revenues are, we have exceeded our budget when it comes to our revenues. And we'll talk a little bit more in the next slide as to what created that. And then as far as our expenses, we're like right on target where we should be. We're not spending too much, and obviously there's no such thing as spending too little, but no one's overspending where we should be.
And Helene, just for those in the audience that are looking at that, those percentages for fiscal year 23, is that relative to the full fiscal year budget or just year to date through March where our budget was?
So the actual is, the budget is for the full fiscal year. We don't do, we don't break down the budget by quarter or by month. So that's what a full year is worth, so why we provide the percentages.
Yep. So just to like reference, all right, we've already through March exceeded our full year revenue and we have three months left, not big revenue months, but still, we've already exceeded that versus Helene's reference to being right on budget is that we are 75% through our expense budget at three quarters through the year.
Right, so we're right on target with three years left, or three months left on expenses, but yet we've exceeded our revenues, so we have three months to actually exceed that even further. So some of our bigger ticket items, when we're looking at our overall revenues, when we're looking at that 6.6, that are, the, the bigger ticket items are the excise tax. And in the past, excise taxes kind of went over budget, but the last two years, we've seen it a steady. It's, as you can see, right in line with the collection in the last year, over 75%. But we're probably going to meet about, meet our budget for excise tax. And again, excise tax is your motor vehicle tax collection. State revenue share, it's a, we're at 100% collection. Last year, it says we're at 131% collection, but we're actually collected more than we did last year because our budget last year was 825,000, where we budgeted this year 1.3 million. So very much more collection, higher collection than we did last year. Again, that number, we don't know what it's year to year, it's just a percentage share of what the state shares with, with each town with, when it comes to state, sales tax collection.
Helene, if I can just jump in really quick, just with one comment here. Just for everyone that, in the room and those at home, the, the parentheticals for the numbers actually denote positive funds into our fund balance. At first, when I first looked at this from an accounting perspective, I thought we're doing terribly here, but it's actually the opposite, so just want to make sure that's clear to everyone.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Another item that we're seeing a huge growth on is on our permits and impact fees. The majority of that is coming through on building permits as well as the impact fees. Again, doing twice as much as we collected last year. And emergency transportation, we're right on par with where we were last year, not seeing any concern with our collection rate. In, in regards to our expenses, just keeping it brief, as far as, we obviously have many other budgets, but these are our three biggest budgets. You can see with the police, fire, and public works, we're right, we're on schedule, where we should be as far as expenses are. When we're looking at it in comparison to being through March 31st, we did have a discussion earlier in Finance Committee about how even with all the changes that we did within the Fire Department, with the kind of organizational changes, and as well with the police. If you remember, in '22, police had a lot of vacancies and now we're fully staffed. So everybody's starting to run on all cylinders at this point, and the, they're coming in quite well on their budgets. Revenue and expenses for Valhalla, again, this is net. We, again, had another discussion that we did not include the new recreation center at Valhalla. This is strictly the course and the pro shop. And as you can see, I did make a note that a negative number means it's a positive impact to the fund balance. And Valhalla has provided us with that positive impact right now. They're at a profit of 116,000 year to date.
Yeah, and just, just to emphasize that point a little bit, if you think about that, not a lot of people are golfing in January and February, but starting in March, April, May, when things warm up, you know, we've, we're already at 93% of our revenue projection for the year.
Again, and it looks like.
Still have another three months to go for that.
And again, it looks like we're low on our collection compared to last year by two percentage points. But actually, Nick increased his revenue budget from '22 to '23, and this is a product of that, which means he's still on target for that increased budget and that increased revenue over last year. And again, recreation is another budget we look at with revenues and expenses together. And these two departments together, your Valhalla and Rec Department, are a major reason for meeting that revenue budget that we saw earlier for third quarter, that we're above the, the 100%, but still at 75% when it comes to expenses. You'll see that overall, the, all the programs are bringing in enough revenue to offset the expenses that they have at the administration level, which is kind of like the overhead, you know, the office, the credit card expenditures. We were having a conversation about like some of the changes we possibly could look at during FY '24 budget, but that it's already built into his current and, and this year's budget as well as next year's budget, that his fees are structured to ensure that he's able to cover his expenses. So to, to date, he's at a $204,000 profit. This does not include anything he's collected for his spring opening that starts for next year. That's all in a deferred revenue, and it's not included in these. So this is purely FY '23's profit. We do expect it to go down a little bit in the next coming months, because there's only, the biggest program he has going on right now is the after-school program. And there's only maybe a year, a month and a half left of that versus his administration runs, you know, year round. So, but we still expect to see a positive turnout for the Record Department. And that's all I have.
I had a question about your selected revenues. You, you selected some categories that were revenues and they were all, well, four out of five were all overachievers. Were there any areas that were underperformers that were notable?
There were probably, if you, I have provided in the council packet your actual detail, and I believe there might have been some that are not coming in, but not to the point that it will overall affect the budget. If they're smaller, more, they have a more of an immaterial effect to the, the end result. Yeah, it's just the smaller fees that we collect for the different things, whether it's from, you know, the ACO or the Police Department, when they put their revenue lines, expectations. The, the major ones that we like, I like to keep an eye on is making sure, like for instance, that the detail pay, that their revenues are matching what they're paying out and not, that we're not losing money by, by managing a detail for, for an organization. And, but, so there's no concern there.
Okay, and I have another question, Madam Chair.
Please.
Out of the 3% that are behind in their taxes, it makes sense for me. And how many households is that? I, I like, that's a real number for me.
Okay, so what I'll do is bring, I'll get that information and I'll be able to email that out. And then for June's, when I give you where we ended the year, I'll make sure that I include what that means in household. That's, that's a good.
That's where the, for me, that's where the real impact is. It's not a 3%, it's a, this many households are having a hard time.
Right.
With their taxes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for Helene? Any questions from the public? Thank you, Helene.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move to accept the second and third quarter financial report as recommended by the Finance Committee.
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. 23-054, to consider and act on moving the June 12th council meeting to June 5th and the June 26th Town Council meeting to June 19th to swear in newly elected town councillors. So the way our charter reads, the standing second and fourth meeting, pretty frequently actually, doesn't work with the calendar in that we would not be able to fulfill our charter requirement to swear in the newly elected town councillors the Monday immediately preceding the election. So this is in order to accommodate that. We will move from the second and fourth Mondays to the first and third, so that the June 19th, we would be able to swear in our new councillors. Any questions or comments?
So Allison, we can't do it the 26th by charter?
By charter, and I think we have it in our council. It actually specifically says it's yes. The council shall meet at the municipal building on the first Monday following the regular town election, and at said meeting, councillors elect shall be sworn.
The 19th is a holiday.
Yes, so that is the other thing. I think we will have that on our agenda in some language to review at our June 5th meeting, which is to be able to move it to the next business day preceding, the next, I think, the way the language, so that in essence, we would be able to meet on Tuesdays. But at this point, the charter says it's the Monday.
Oh, absolutely.
Yep, nope, it's a good point.
It's unfortunate. It's like one in every six years. But the 19th will fall on a Monday, and it just happens to be this year.
Yep.
So, so is it, step one is really to make this change? Step two would be on June 5th to add that additional language regarding business days?
To start the process to make a charter change.
Sure, fair.
Because it'll have to be on the November election.
That makes sense.
But yes, so that for next year and all further so approved by the public, that it would then no longer be an issue.
Got it. Thank you.
Ezra.
Any questions or comments from the public? Thank you, Mike.
You're good.
So I have a motion? Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ron. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Twenty-three dash zero five five to hear a report from Gorel Palmer Engineers regarding the intersection of Blanchard and Skiln's Road.
Madam Chair, Randy Dutton from Gorel Palmer Engineers is here to give you that report.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. As Mr. Shane said, my name is Randy Dutton. I am a traffic engineer with Gorel Palmer. We were asked to review the intersection of Skiln Road and Blanchard Road, primarily to evaluate the, the stop controls and which intersection or which approaches should be stopped and which maybe shouldn't be or should it be changed at all. We did a similar evaluation back in 2015, for those who are still, you know, on the board. And we came up with some conclusions then and we basically redid the same evaluation to see if anything had changed and to see if our recommendation was any different. We started the evaluation by completing turning movement counts. Those basically sitting at the intersection and counting traffic left and right and that sort of thing. We did that on Thursday, April 27th of this year. We completed the turning movement counts from, I believe it was 6:30 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. And then again, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. We then take those counts and adjust those seasonally so that they represent peak summer conditions. We did the same thing in 2015 and I compared the two and there's been about a 6% to 7% increase in, in traffic. One of the things or two of the things that we saw from the traffic volume counts is the predominant movement in the a.m. condition is the right-turning traffic from Skiln Road on to, to go southbound on Blanchard Road. And then almost the identical volume of traffic doing the opposite in the evening. It's going from northbound on Blanchard Road, taking a left on to Skiln Road. The, the next thing we did to evaluate the intersection was we looked at safety. The main department of transportation, for instance, classifies certain intersections as high crash locations. Those locations are, are ones that fit two criteria. One, they have eight or more crashes in a three-year period and they have what's called a critical rate factor of one or greater. They have to have both of those conditions. We looked at 2020 to 2022. 2023 obviously isn't complete yet, so we have to look at the, the latest complete year. Based on that review, there actually was only one crash, which is, which is good. There was only one crash and the critical rate factor, which I said had to be one or greater, was 0.59. So, that's, you know, that's definitely a positive trend. The next thing we did after we looked at the traffic volumes and we looked at the safety was to look to see what can be done at the intersection as far as, you know, what are all the alternatives? Now, obviously, no control, no stop signs is, is not an option. Then the, usually the first option when you're looking at something is the, we call it the do-nothing option. Leave it as is. In this particular case, that would be a stop control on Skiln and stop control on the southbound approach of Blanchard. The northbound approach does not have any stop control at all. So, that was our first option. When we looked at that, we, first of all, that, that particular configuration, we call that a T-intersection, even though there is a, a driveway across from Skiln Road. We would call that a T-intersection. And typically for a T-intersection, there's either, it's either stopped on the, we call it the stem of the T, or it's always stopped. So, the fact that this has a stop on southbound and a stop on Skiln is, is unconventional and it's not expected. It confuses some drivers that are not used to the intersection. When we did our counts and also afterwards, when we've done some other observations at the intersection, this became kind of apparent for, I'm assuming, drivers that had not gone through the intersection before or not had gone through it very much anyway. And what was happening was southbound, the one that has a stop control, there were people that were coming up and stopping, as they should, but I can only guess that they assumed that the opposite direction of Blanchard Road also had to stop because they would cut off the left-turning traffic on to Skiln Road. And something very similar, we saw for northbound traffic of Blanchard Road is they don't have a stop and the left-turning traffic was hesitating when they got to the intersection in taking their left turn movement because I can only suspect that their thinking is the other approach also does not have to stop. So, that was a little concerning in, in looking at that. And again, it, the intersection currently kind of violates driver expectations for what's a typical, similar intersection that if they were to go down the road, they would experience. The next option that we looked at was if Skiln War, Skiln Road, the approach, were the only one that was stopped. We didn't see any issues with this. One of the, the reasons that the southbound Blanchard Road could be stop control is if sight distance were an issue. If you came up to Skiln Road and you looked to the left and there was a, a building or, or something that couldn't be changed and sight distance was not good. You would want to stop that control. That's, that's a perfectly good reason why you would stop it. We didn't put that in the, in the report, but we did look at sight distance and sight distance is, is not an issue if you come up on Skiln Road and look left and right. You can see in, in both directions, you know, far enough or per the, the town standards, which is 10 miles or 10 feet for every mile per hour. So, if it's 30 miles per hour, you want to see 300 feet. 35 miles per hour, you want to see 350 feet. Just for reference, the Skiln Road approach is 35 miles per hour. The Blanchard northbound approach, so south of the intersection, is identified by main DOT as 35 miles per hour also. But the north leg of the intersection or southbound, if you're going southbound on Blanchard Road, is actually identified by main DOT as 30 miles per hour. But when we checked, we checked for 35 anyway, just to be safe. And you can see 350 feet plus. So, we didn't see a reason why it couldn't be just, just Skiln Road. The third option that we looked at was, as I mentioned, a, they call it a multi-way stop. And that's basically a stop on all three approaches. There's a manual out there that's called the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. It's typically called the MUTCD. That provides guidance, national standard, if you will, as to guidance on when you should install a multi-way stop. There's several criteria that should be reviewed and recommended. And we looked through and we, in the, in the evaluation, we went through each of their guidance criteria. And the conclusion that we came up with is that, based on the volumes and the crash history and, and everything that we saw, it wouldn't meet the criteria for a multi-way stop. And generally, you do not want to, unless you have a really good reason, you do not want to violate the MUTCD because that can get you into potentially liability issues. So, that left the two options again of the, the existing condition that what I said was somewhat inconsistent with driver expectations and the stop on Skiln only. So, the next step we took was we said, okay, how do they compare if we do a capacity analysis? Basically, we look at the level of service. How well would it operate? Would it be an A, which is good, similar to, you know, a report card? A is good, F is, is not so good. So, we looked at both Skiln-only stop control and the condition of Blanchard southbound being stop control and Skiln being stop control. And both of them, quite honestly, came out pretty much the same. They're all levels of service A, which is really good. So, it's not gonna, one way or the other, it's not going to change your level of service at the intersection. So, based on all of that criteria and all of that evaluation, our recommendation, our final recommendation was to change it to Skiln Road stop control only. And again, the, the primary reason is, in our opinion, driver expectation. And the concerns that we saw when we were doing the count and doing additional observations and how people were reacting. I was delighted to see that there was only one crash. But I, I have to believe that there were a lot of near misses in the last three years, based on what I saw. I personally did some of the observations just so I could stand up here and tell you what, you know, what I saw. So, that's our recommendation. It is the same recommendation that we came to in 2015. None of the data really changed anything that we saw back then and it's all the same as it is. And, and that's, that's it. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions or discuss how, how we looked at something or why we looked at something.
Maybe just before we get to questions, I will just note, I, I had asked the town manager to also pull kind of the speed, I forget what we call it, the speed tracker, monitor, whatever you want to call it, that we've done in that area because I think we've heard in the town survey and we've had folks come up and speak to us too about the speed, especially down Blanchard Road extension, how it feels like it's fast at times. And so, I had a feeling we'd put the speed tracker out there. So, I wanted to get a sense because I think the other piece would be that would a stop sign slow any traffic if things were at a higher rate? But I, I will say from the two that you've put in here, while clearly there was some excessive speed there, you can see there's some higher than the speed limit. The average that had gone through in both these locations was within, so like, I guess, your monitoring of kind of sight lines and needing to be within that speed, I would say on average, and significantly, the average is within that so that the sight lines would be appropriately marked or kind of quantified. Is that fair? Did I miss anything?
The only, the only thing that we also discussed was there are no shoulders of, several of the neighbors, Mr. Sherwin pointed that out to me as well, in that short distance from Orchard Road to Skiln Road, there's kind of, there's, you're kind of in no-man zones, a little over, what, 1,000 feet or so? I think I have the distance on the sketch. But there's kind of no way to escape if people are kind of walking to the shoulders of Blanchard Road, which have the wider shoulders as to Skiln's Road. That small section really is kind of in no man's land. And also, Mr. Nagel pointed out that the stop sign up there, the speed sign up there is 35, not 30. Randy pointed out the correct speed is 30 miles an hour, so that will get changed.
Thank you. So, now, any questions or comments from the council? Go ahead, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Would you agree that this is a fairly busy stretch of road for, for the town?
The traffic volumes, there are, there's a number that's thrown out there. It's called double ADT, annual average daily traffic. And that's basically how much traffic goes by a certain point and that's both directions. Skiln Road was a little over 2,000, 2,200, somewhere in there. Blanchard Road, the south leg, was up closer to 2,500 vehicles per day. And the Blanchard Road northern leg was right around 1,700 double ADT. Generally speaking, those are relatively low as far as volume goes. I'm sure if you live on the road, you wouldn't think that. But in comparing roads, that double ADT is not extremely high. It's, it's, it's certainly something that a road, a, a standard road can more than accommodate. And the fact that the level of service, when we did the capacity analysis, showed all levels of service A is another indicator that, you know, it's, it's certainly not, you know, reaching capacity or, or anything like that.
So, in the course of a month, with the 2,500 vehicles, in the course of a month, you're looking at around 80,000 transactions through that, that intersection.
Mm-hmm.
Times that by three years.
Mm-hmm.
And we've only had one accident. Wouldn't that, wouldn't that be an indicator that the intersection's working?
Not always. And the, the reason I say that, it could be, yes. It absolutely could be. There's another situation is that when people recognize that something is different or potentially unsafe, they actually slow down and go through it more carefully than they would if it were, you know, not that way. So, it, it, it could be that, you know, that, you're right, it's an indicator that it's not a safety issue. It also could be an indicator that everybody that goes through there, and it's a, I suspect it's a, most of the people that go through there probably go through there frequently, is they recognize that it's a little tricky and they go through it a little more carefully.
Yeah, and I just did the rough math, math. It's 2,880,000, I call them transactions at that intersection. And we've only had one accident. I, I would think that it would be pretty obvious that the intersection's working. Whether or not it's because people are more cautious.
Right.
But whatever it is, as my grandmother used to say, the proof's in the pudding. And, you know, you're, you're just shy of 3 million transactions.
Sure.
And one accident is because somebody ran the stop sign.
Right.
A 15 to 19-year-old.
What's that?
A 15 to 19-year-old ran the stop sign at 10 o'clock on a Thursday night.
So, that's, but I appreciate very much all your hard work on this.
Yeah, yeah, no, that, that's definitely a consideration, absolutely.
Thank you.
Some historical perspective perhaps. I understand the caution because when I'm coming up Blanchard Road, I'm more cautious watching the people coming down. uh, I'm more cautious watching the people coming down Blanchard Road, run, checking to see if they're gonna run that stop sign.
Mm-hmm.
Or, or, or not. But i- if I think about the historical, uh, background of that, uh, intersection, uh, Blanchard Road always curved towards Skilling's Road. There was not a, uh, a hammer, you know, right-hand turn. It was, it was more of a curve when I was growing up. And in fact, there was no stop sign on Skilling's Road. It was, uh, that was just the, the travel right of way. And, and the Blanchard Road, Blanchard Road Extension was a narrower piece of road. Uh, in fact, it was unpaved, uh, early on, uh, and then it was paved and now it's, it's wider. But so, uh, if you, by creating more of that right, well, you don't, you don't see the curve in the road anymore. It's, it's, you come to a stop sign and it's, it's a defined right angle from both directions. So, uh, I think that the, um, common sense would say eliminate the stop sign because, uh, the, the, uh, the, the novice, those folks who are not, uh, don't have a, the, the awareness of the community, are more inclined to think that traffic should flow, uh, that way and, and Skilling's Road should be the stop. But, uh, looking at the historical, the way the road appeared years ago, it was a curve. It wasn't a, a right angle.
And, and in fact, um, if you're going northbound on Blanchard Road, uh, there is a sign that, that, uh, I'm, I'm gonna be working with, uh, Mr. Shane for the, the signs to, to, um, give some, some advice. Um, but one of the signs northbound is actually a curve sign.
Right.
And it gives no indication that there's even, um, you know, the, the Blanchard Road, the, the Blanchard Road Extension, there's, there's no indication in that sign that there's even a road there. It just shows a curve.
Right.
And it shows the curve as being Blanchard onto Skilling.
Right, and that was a historical.
Yeah.
Use of that road.
So, so that sign, depending on, you know, how you do things, um, that sign should, should be replaced.
Go ahead, Dick. Um, so I'm a near miss. Um, I'm not in the fifteen to seventeen-year-old, uh, new drivers. But, um, you know, the first time I, I dropped my daughter off, um, to a playdate off of Blanchard Extension, um, I was going northbound, totally normal, and on the way back, I blew right through that. Not because, and I'm a pretty good driver, I'm not, you know, I'm not given driving instructions, but, um, I think that, um, you know, just one thing to consider is just kind of that common sense element, right? Um, and certainly after I had that experience, um, I am now very, very cautious. Um, because I'm not an irresponsible driver, right? And I know that someone else might also make kind of that same mistake. So wherever we, wherever we land on this, um, I just think whether it be better signage or, um, you know, maybe educating those of us that are kind of new, new to playdate dropping offs, it's not super intuitive to me. Um, and, uh, it's just kind of where I am on it.
And, and that's the, that's the part where, um, I was mentioning driver expectations. Um, let's face it, a lot of us driving, me included, um, get into, we're thinking about this or that or whatever, and we follow what is conventional. You know, when we get to, in a certain situation, when we see something coming up, we follow what we've always done in the same situation. Um, and that's why when something is unconventional, uh, for those drivers that are not paying a hundred percent attention, um, they're gonna do what they normally do in the same circumstance that they did four times before they got to this intersection. Um, so that's why, um, violating driver expectation, uh, can be dangerous.
Go ahead, Charles.
In, um, in contrast to Tig's blowing through the intersection, I only travel like Blanchard to Skilling's. I don't, I hardly ever go straight. Um, and for that reason, when I get to that intersection, there's a hesitation on my left turn. As you mentioned, um, your report mentions that in the observations for the person who was out there making the observation, that there's some hesitation on the part of the left turning traffic because people do, if you're familiar with that intersection.
And the, the issue was, or the problem could be that if you get a driver that is not familiar with the intersection and you get somebody directly behind them that is familiar with the intersection, they're expecting that left turning vehicle to make their left turn. They're not expecting them to stop.
Or even hesitate.
Or, or even hesitate.
Yeah.
Um, and so that's where it's.
Then you get a rear-end crash.
You could. Um, but again, a- as you indicated, you know, fortunately, there's, there hasn't been that. So, it's kind of a catch twenty-two.
I travel through this intersection probably more than anybody else on the council. You're saying the majority of the traffic is either making a right-hand turn off from Skilling's or a left-hand turn off from Blanchard onto Skilling's. So the majority of the traffic is traveling south and north, turning onto Skilling's.
Correct. The, Durit, that was, that was the observations during the AM peak hour and the PM peak hour that we counted. It was predominantly Skilling onto Blanchard southbound in the morning and almost the exact opposite, uh, in the afternoon. Yep.
And you talk about people hesitating. Sometimes hesitating is better than not.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that stop sign that's southbound on Blanchard Road Extension has always been a traffic calming device. There are quite a few people that roll through that stop sign. If the chief sat there all day, he'd run out of tickets. But it is a traffic calming device and it has worked. Mike, you hit it right on the head. That is one of the safest intersections in the town of Cumberland. Everybody here knows what I do. I'll benefit if you take that stop sign out, I'll guarantee it. I mean, I, I'm being brutally honest. The people that come to the Cumberland Fair will come down Skilling's Road and they'll stop and they'll see a car coming down Blanchard Road Extension. He's gonna say, well, he's gonna stop, I'm gonna go. And he's gonna get nailed right in the driver's door. I mean, that sign is nothing but a traffic calming device. It is a stop sign and it works. I, I mean, we went through this back in, was it fifteen, I think? And I, I mean, I'm gonna come up with the same conclusion that I did back then, so. And I'll benefit if we take it out, so.
I should note, we are not taking action tonight. Actually, our next agenda item would be to set the public hearing kind of more specifically to, to take action. But I, I do invite any other questions, cause I, I don't know that you will be here on, on the fifth. So I wanted to kind of give folks, the public, the time as well in case you have questions on the study or, um, anything kind of highlighting to think about. And again, know that we are not taking action tonight. Our next agenda item would be to, to set the, the item for our June fifth meeting to actually make any action. Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have one additional question here, Randy. Um, you mentioned that the MUTCD, and I didn't get the full name of the thing, but that the acronym for the study, the, the standard study, said that we, this intersection would not, I guess, be eligible for or qualify for a three-way stop, adding a stop sign. I just bring it up because I, I drive that road heading northbound on Blanchard quite a bit, taking that left turn onto Skilling to take my kids to play baseball in West Cumberland. And I would say almost every time, I, I again hesitate and I almost think I blew a stop sign. Because I get into the intersection and I start to hesitate and I see somebody stopping coming southbound on Blanchard, somebody stopping on Skilling, ready to turn. And I think that I'm the one that maybe should have stopped there. Otherwise, there should be, in my view, no stop signs coming in this direction.
Right.
So, can you explain why the three-way stop was kind of ruled out of this analysis?
Sure. Um, and that acronym is, uh, Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, MUTCD. Actually, I think it's Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. Um, it goes through several criteria, um, or I shouldn't say criteria. It gives guidance. Um, the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices is not, um, it's not intended to be yes or no, gray or, you know, uh, black or white. Uh, it's intended to give guidance and standards. Um, and it's national standard, so the whole United States, you know, follows the same sort of criteria. Um, and it goes through and it discusses, um, things like, uh, crashes. It looks at crashes. And, you know, do you have a crash pattern? Do you have so many crashes within the last, you know, three years or, or whatever? Do you have a certain amount of pedestrians or bicyclists? Do you have a, a total, what's called a total entering volume? Which is if you were to add everybody coming in at once for an hour. Um, you know, does that equal a certain volume, if you will? Are the volumes, um, equal or relatively equal? Um, you know, obviously, if one is heavy or two are heavy and one is very light, you know, does that mean that, that, that the light one should be, um, should be the stop control? Um, because the higher traffic volume you have, the, anytime that you stop vehicles, you increase the potential for a crash. Um, there are a lot more crashes involving incidents of, of when you stop a vehicle than there are letting a vehicle go, you know, on a, on a road. Um, so it kind of factors in pros and cons and, and ways, whether or not it's better to stop everybody or whether or not it's better to let some traffic go. Uh, and that's the process that you go through. Um, I wanna say, let's see, justify multiple, I'm looking at, hmm, traffic signal. One of the criteria is, is it, uh, is it an interim between not controlled at all and getting a traffic signal? Um, one of the reasons that you would put a, a, a multi-way stop is if it was going through that process. Or you weren't quite there for a traffic signal, but you were almost there. Um, you know, obviously, this intersection is not gonna, not gonna warn a traffic signal. Um, so, and, and I'm not sure that you'd really want one there. Um, one of the criteria is five or more reported crashes in a twelve-month period. You know, you don't even come close to that. Uh, so, uh, the vehicular volume entering the intersection from the major street approaches averages at least three hundred vehicles per hour for any eight hours. You know, that's, that's a lot of traffic. Um, you know, I think you met maybe an hour or something. Um, but certainly not, you're not gonna meet eight hours. Um, and we did have some, the main DOT did some, they call it ATRs, uh, automatic traffic recorders. Um, they did some counts that we also use and I think are, are included in this as well, um, on each of the approaches. So you can see what your traffic volume is and you can see where your peaks are. Um, so that's included and we use that. Um, and then it talks about pedestrians and bicycles. Um, you know, we saw very little pedestrian and bicycle, some, um, but not nearly the volume that it would look for to have a multi-way stop. Um, and then it gives criteria if the eighty-fifth percentile approach speed, uh, for the major street traffic exceeds forty miles per hour. Uh, although we didn't do a, a speed study, um, you know, your, your speeds are thirty-five and thirty. So.
Okay.
Does that, does that help?
It does, and I see that in section three here in the multi-way stop, the.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Do I have any questions from the public? Yep, go ahead. Yep, just, yep.
Hi, Nicole Neville, so I'm Blanchard Road Extension. Um, some of the questions I had was the, uh, report. In your report, it mentioned you use some modeling software in order to run your simulations. Um, so I'll apologize now, I work for a software company that does that for staffing. I'm gonna have a whole boatload of questions to ask. Um, so some of the questions I had, I noticed that the, uh, the volumetric time period that you used was a snapshot of being on Thursday, the twenty-seventh. Um, but you indicated you use some scaling factors to simulate for other periods of time. Um, what kind of, uh, modeling inputs and, um, historical pattern information did you use to, to drive those simulations?
Um, we took the volumes or we, we did the turning movement counts on, again, on April twenty-seventh. And we use what's called weekly group mean factors. Um, those are provided by the Maine Department of Transportation. And what they do is they provide, um, depending on the classification of roadway, um, it gives factors throughout the whole year. Um, and the factors are used to adjust whenever you happen to take, you know, obviously, um, you can't always do your turning movement counts i- in the, you know, July and August. So what they do is they collect, um, traffic throughout the state and they identify classifications of roadways. There's typically group one, two, and three. Um, and they get adjustment factors so that you can adjust your traffic to either, um, the average of the year or you can adjust it to any other time of the year. Um, the standard for, um, doing traffic studies is, it's called the thirtieth highest hour. And that typically occurs in the sixth highest week of the year. Um, that's standard practice for at least Maine DOT, um, and doing traffic studies in Maine. So that's what we did, was we adjusted it using the group, weekly group mean factors. Uh, and you can find those on their website as well. Um, and we have, we show the adjustments on our figures, so you can follow that. Excuse me. Um, so you adjust the factors to the weekly group mean, using the weekly group mean factors and you adjust them to the, the sixth highest or the thirtieth highest hour of the year. Um, the modeling we used was a combination of Syncro, it's called Syncro, and Simtraffic. Um, the, you put your data into the Syncro modeling and then you transfer it over to Simtraffic. Um, I don't know how deep you want me to get here.
You already are, Hid.
I think that's, you know, that, that's good, cause I know everybody's gonna wanna go home, so I won't, uh, does your, did your, did you, the big topic in town has been about the increase in population.
Mm-hmm.
So did there any projection-wise growth rates, was that projected into this at all?
No, we used, um, we did our, uh, analysis on twenty-twenty-three. They call it design hourly volumes. And by saying design hourly volumes, that means it's been adjusted to typically the thirtieth highest hour or the sixth highest week. Um, so it was twenty-twenty-three, it was basically, um, right now, if you will, twenty-twenty-three. Um, because lots of times you do project into the future, but the reason for this, this study was to evaluate what to do right now.
Absolutely.
Yep. So if it were, um, you know, how was it going to operate fully stop-controlled in ten years from now, then we would have done it a little differently. So that's why we did it the way we did.
Okay, my last question, is there an adherence rate to how frequently the, uh, the, I forgot the name of it already, MUT?
MUTCD?
MUTCD, how, how, um, frequently those standards are adhered to overall?
Well, they will say in, in, in the very beginning of the manual, uh, the manual's like this thick, um, is that it's not a replacement for engineering judgment. So they, i- i- it's not, they're not rules and regulations. They are standards, general, generally accepted standards, national standards. Um, so, typically, if you, in, in the engineering judgment part, you really should have, um, a good reason not to follow them. Um, you read through them, you check, you know, everything that it says to check. Um, and unless you really have a good reason not to, um, you should adhere to them. Um, and unless you really have a good reason not to, um, you should adhere to them.
And you did mention that liability could happen from not adhering to them, is that?
Uh, it, it could be, I'm, I'm certainly not a, a lawyer, um, but I have been involved with many cases where that is the first thing they bring out, is the MUTCD. Um, and they say, well, you didn't do it according to the MUTCD. Um, so I have, I've been doing this over 30 years and I, that's happened to me more times than I can say.
Awesome, thank you for the ques- for answering the questions, I appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Could you just, it's for folks that are watching at home, they can't hear, yeah.
Okay, um, Kathy on Skellin Road. Question for you is, I'm troubled by, this doesn't have anything to do with that particular intersection, but the intersection of Orchard Road and Blanchard Road Extension. Blanchard Road Extension is a dead-end road, but yet it has the right-of-way versus a through-road. Can you explain to me why that happens? Number, that's unrelated really to this, but you can answer it, I'm sure. The other thing is I agree exactly with what Ron says, if you take away that stop sign on Blanchard Road, there's gonna be a lot of accidents. I go that way, I live on Skellin, it's a teeny tiny road, we got this contentious roundabout on one side and now a change in the stop sign on the other side. It just seems, if it ain't broke, don't fix that, you know? And we went through this in 2015, we had a public meeting and it was decided that if it weren't broke, leave it alone. And so here we are again with the same thing. And yes, um, population has grown on Blanchard Road, Orchard Road, but it's residential. Skellin Road is commercial, that is trucks going by our house all of the time. And they have to stop at Skellin Road, it seems only fair that the people coming down Blanchard Road have to do the same. But anyhow, if you could explain that dead-end, why they have the right-of-way, I'd appreciate it.
I, I apologize, but I can't, um, because I would be out of place because I haven't thoroughly looked at it. And I don't know the reasons why, um.
Well, it missed me, 'cause I would never voted for that.
So, I don't mean to, to sidestep your question, but I, I would be out of place if I commented on something I didn't know the facts.
Okay, thank you, fair enough.
You do sound like a lawyer.
Do we have other questions?
Bruce Sherwin, Blanchard Road, I live right on the corner of this intersection. Been there for four, almost 42 years. And one, one question I have is, um, the one accident that's been in three years, I don't know what it is, can somebody tell me what it is? Shirley, you seem to know about it. What is it like?
All I could, I had to go through all the data where it was all zeros and look for that one. And they break it down as to how old the driver is, what the conditions of the road were, um, what time of day it was. I think really it was a 15-to-19-year-old who ran the stop sign and went across into the ditch.
Yeah, so it was a one-car accident.
It was a one-car accident, yes it was.
I didn't know, 'cause I, I didn't know about the accident, I read the same thing. Wanted to see if somebody else had the same conclusion.
Then they drove it away.
Yep. And, uh, the other thing I'd like to say is to Mr. Bill, when I talked about that road is narrow, I, I want, I included Blanchard Road Extension. There are a lot of walkers, including us, we walk up there and the, the traffic has gotten so much and it's a speedway that from the end, the dirt of Blanchard Road Extension to the tops of Morrison Hill, except for the stop sign, it's a speedway. And so the other question is, I just remembered, um, we're gonna be able to comment at June 5th, correct? Yeah, so I'm gonna save my other comments for then, thank you, yep.
Go ahead, sir.
My, my name's Ian Smith, I live on Blanchard Road Extension. And I guess, I don't know if these are questions as much as they're kind of, um, maybe remarks. So it seems to me like the intersection, you know, based on the lack of accidents, it kind of does work. And if there were, um, you know, problem times, the problem times would be around the fairgrounds when there's a lot of, you know, people from out of town that are lost or trying to find something and it, I wonder if there'd been some consideration of putting up some temporary signage, like during that critical time, just to remind people that a stop sign was coming up or that they should, you know, carry speed through the, you know, through Blanchard Road onto Skellin and not stop. So that'd be one remark. And I think the other, um, you know, possible problem time, like I lived, I've lived on, um, the extension for quite a while and I notice when there's a, you know, kind of a development, there's all the new drivers that are kind of unaware of the traffic patterns. And, um, you know, if there'd been a consideration to kind of enhancing the stop sign with a little sparkly lights or something to remind them that it is a stop. You know, 'cause generally it's kind of a, you know, new residents that just kind of, you know, like, people that have lived in town a long time think that, uh, you know, S- Skellin Road into town is the main traveled road, but if you live, if you're a new resident on Blanchard Road Extension, as far as the new residents are concerned, you know, it's a freeway between Blanchard Road Extension and downtown Cumberland. So I think a little reminder that they should stop or at least roll through the stop sign would, uh, you know, might be a, you know, might, keep it safe.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Nagel.
Hi, my name's Chris Nagel, I live on Orchard Road, I'm the reason you're all here. I was the reason you're all here in 2015. And I want to thank the town for taking this seriously and doing a far more intensive report than it did eight years ago. I'm not gonna give you my whole speech, I know you got another meeting, I want to save it for that. But I want to mention really good news tonight. I agree that the stretch of Blanchard Road Extension between Orchard Road and Skellin Road is dangerous. Cars go too fast and there are no shoulders. And the houses that are on them, most of them were built long ago with relative short driveways, so they gotta back out sometimes, and that's a problem. And what I tried to convince the town to do eight years ago was let's drop that to 30 miles an hour. And I was told, no, you can't do that. Well, I was glad to hear tonight, when I read the report tonight and, wherever he is, thank you, said it was 30, I went to Bill, I said, no, that's a mistake. Anyway, long story short, the MDOT, which has some power over Blanchard Road, 'cause I think state funds are used to maintain it, says that should be 30 miles an hour. So if you do nothing else, I sure hope you direct the town manager to confirm with DOT and if so, to reduce the speed limit on that stretch of road. For those of you that think stop signs are speed control measures, all I can say is, where is your basis for that other than stop signs obviously cause people to slow down? Um, and, and again, I know there are people opposed in the audience and on the council. I guess I want you to think about when you know something and when you don't know something. This affects much of my life as a lawyer. The phrase I've come up with is being dangerously semi-educated. You think you know something, but you don't know enough to know what you don't know. And I would encourage each of you to read that report, it's only three pages or four pages of text. Read it, it's not hard. And ask yourself whether your education and training makes you think you know more than a traffic engineer. It would be Lee walking into Ron Kopp's shop and telling him how to replace an engine. I wouldn't even try. Same with you, Mike, trying to deal with law enforcement, come in and tell you how to set policy. I wouldn't dare try, it would be insulting. So I'm unconcerned about council members, who based on whatever their reasons are and how they articulate them, I don't think our council members should be contradicting clear recommendations. The words "dangerous" are in the report. So, that's an important consideration for the council as it considers these issues. And I hope what comes out of this, and, and I guess the other thing I want to mention is, to the neighbors, everyone thinks the sky is falling, but it never does. When, what's the road that connects Blanchard Road over to Route 9, Bill? 10 years ago, it was a huge to-do about it. Harris Road. When we at the planning board approved the project that allowed Harris Road to be connected, the room was full of people from the neighborhood on Harris Road who predicted the end of the earth. They made statements like, there will be accidents and there will be problems. Well, I almost never go that way, 'cause it's not very fast and I never see anything out there. And again, if you choose to live on a mi- a 35 mile-an-hour road with no road shoulder and you expect to be able to freely walk on that road like you could down roads with shoulders, you're, I no longer walk on the roads I live on, I do not, it's dangerous. It's not dangerous and they're only going 35. So, I think people need to understand that I hope this board follows science. This is science and thank you for listening.
I'm Clayton Reed and live on Skellin's Road. My thing is if it's not broke, don't fix it. Uh, but I've driven that, I've been living that area for 50 years, uh, it sounds like a long time, but the roads worked. The stop sign works, uh, I'd like to see it stay, thanks.
I'm Brenda Sherwin and I live on that corner. I watch the traffic more than you do. You didn't do it all day long, is that right? Okay, the local people, when do we walk the roads?
When he's not doing that.
That's right. And when are the big trucks going by?
All day long.
All day long. Okay, you said every time you stop, a vehicle stops, it's more, gonna cause an accident, is that true?
I said it
Could
It's more It improves the chance.
Okay. If the flow of traffic is going Blanchard Road to Skellin's, you take that stop sign down, guess what? There's a lot of people gonna stop on Blanchard Road, right? 'Cause they gotta turn, those traffic is barreling down. They're gonna stop, you're gonna have little fender benders right there, all those big trucks going by. You better stop, Story King, because those traffic isn't gonna stop. So you're gonna have to. I live on it, I'm outside all the time, yes, I don't run a daycare anymore, but I'm still outside. And that will be a problem, you take that stop sign down, there will be big problems.
Hi, Nicole Nevelis, and I just want to add that, you know, data is important. I think he did a really great job with the data he pulled together, the way he explained it in his report. Um, I've pulled together many of those myself. But data, like everything, is just one piece of it. And it comes down to where does, who are the people that live there and live in that neighborhood and what does it mean? And sometimes what seems conventional is something that we should do, but sometimes doing something that's unconventional is the right thing to do. So, you know, there'll be a couple of weeks to marinate on this, a few people have expressed their voices and their opinions. I am one of those people on Blanchard Road Extension and as the woman just said, we do live there, we do see it every day. We're not there sitting at the stop sign for one minute thinking, oh, this is an inconvenience to my life to sit here. Or, you know, we've, and, and exactly that, we've not seen any accidents there exactly for that reason, because it does work. But we know that traffic is continuing to go up, it's, the roads have changed, you know, in the past 50 years. And they keep on changing and the more that we bring conventional things to roads that were built a long time ago, we actually are going to increase the risk of things happening. At one point, and, and I, I'm waiting for the day that I walk outside and one of my neighbors has been hit by a car, their dog's been hit. So, you know, that's scary to me. And if the answer to calming traffic isn't, you know, stop signs, which naturally make people slow down, then, um, then, you know, what potentially are those, those, um, things? So, you know, I just want to express my support for my neighbors that are here and, um, and to just think about that data beyond what's in a report, but the people who live there and the context in which that all falls in, thanks.
Thanks, everyone, as I mentioned, there's, there's no action on this item, but that actually brings us to our next item, which is 23-056, to set a public hearing date of June 5th to consider and act on the recommendation of Goral Palmer engineers regarding the intersection of Blanchard and Skellin's Road.
So moved, is that good?
Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. Thank you for being here this evening and going through that, really do appreciate not only the time and the report, but being here this evening to answer questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next is new business and I will start with our manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I, I did want to announce that Thursday night at the West Cumberland Hall, we'll have a presentation by Goral Palmer on the roundabout and it's really just an update. Uh, it'll be a lot of the same stuff we covered a year ago, so, uh, nothing really new other than it's a step that's required in the process to move this project further down the road. Uh, also, we have the Memorial Day Parade coming up on Monday, 10 o'clock's start time, so be there or, or, or miss it. So, uh, it's usually one of the best days of the year in Cumberland, I love the parade. We'll also be dedicating, I think, 30 or 35 new names to the, uh, to the monument, so it'll be a pretty special day to be there. Uh, also, we're looking at the, uh, June 5th council meeting to have a workshop with the Hedges Road Drive Neighborhood. Uh, they have requested a, uh, time with the council to talk about the through-traffic to Valhalla and the golf course, uh, the speed of traffic and the volume of traffic as well are our concerns. And then finally, uh, we're working with the ordinance committee on some zoning definitions that will allow a, I'm gonna get this wrong, Shirley, agrotourism definition to our zoning that will allow farmers to add, uh, different types of, uh, of, of elements um, under the agricultural umbrella, so they can do more than just farming, this is more of the off-season. Uh, this came about by the, uh, the, um, the Grange at Longwoods. They're looking at, uh, three tent sites on that, on that property. And as long as they could meet the main plumbing code for wastewater disposal and all that, um, everyone felt it was okay, except we don't have an ord- uh, we don't have a definition. So we're trying to help them out through that and help the farmers who will be on that property, who we met, uh, as staff, uh, here, and, uh, they're very excited to get started this summer. And that's all I have.
So we have the parade, I'll just also just highlight, so there's the kids' fun run that starts at 8:00 and then the 5K at 8:30. And so you can just conveniently just finish your 5K, wait to pick up your inevitable award and then walk right over. So it really is a great morning if you're, if you're around and in town to just take some time and, and say thank you. I will start with you, Mr. Kopp.
I have my $20 for the 4H food pantry, uh, which is a very
I have my twenty dollars for the four-H food pantry, which is a very worthy cause. September, the manager goes to the four-H food auction, uh, to the four-H auction and buys food for the food pantry. And it's a good program and hope it continues. And I urge everybody, whether you live in West Cumberland, Cumberland Center, or the Forside, to show up at the West Cumberland Community Hall Thursday night from five-thirty to seven, Bill. Is that correct?
Six to seven-thirty.
Six to seven-thirty.
Six to seven-thirty, okay.
You can come at five-thirty. I'll be there.
Pretty close. But it will be just a very informational thing, and I'll answer a lot of questions. That's all I have.
Big thank you to all of the council members who showed up very early on our last Saturday to walk through Twinbrook to see the invasive management plan on Town and Lands. I think that there's just incredible work kind of going on within the larger management plan. When we were on the do... The dog trail, I mean, if anything underscores the need for people kind of coming together to battle the bittersweet in the buckthor, and I mean, take a walk on the dog trail. I think I was on there for five minutes before I had three ticks on me. Whereas the other kind of part that we looked at is, you know, in really, really, really good shape. And I just wanted to kind of give a shout out to the Lands and Conservation Commission for doing a lot on the residential level with their iMap invasives and really educating people what they can do with their own yards, because it's sort of one of those bigger community efforts, right? And so, yeah, just kind of great work there. And on that note, the forestry subcommittee's very own Sally Stockwell has a really great article in this quarter's main Audubon habitat, kind of talking about the global, the global flavor to local forestry management. It's a really great read, so I would encourage everyone to pick it up if they have a chance. That's it for me.
Mr. Van?
I was going to say nothing, but I can't, can't help but get on my soapbox for just a second. I have an elderly uncle, ninety-five, and I have an elderly mother-in-law of ninety-one. And, uh, we've, uh, I just wanted to make sure that the council is on board with housing. One of the things that I've, that has bothered me from, uh, for many, any number of years, and one of the things that I've wanted to have, uh, as an accomplishment before I leave the county council, is a place for our elderly people, i.e. a nursing home, elder care facility. And, uh, one of the things that I've learned in recent years from personal experience is how expensive it is, how few opportunities there are for people. And one of the things that really, that comes home to me is the lack of people to reside in their community for the rest of their life and not have a place to go. Case of my uncle, he's, lives in Portland. He spent his entire life in Falmouth, dedicated his life to a life of service there. And, you know, the, the lack of that community connection for him is, to me, is, is one of the things that will probably kill him more than anything else. And so, I know that we have housing issues in front of us, and, uh, we're going to have some opportunities this year to explore some of those, but I just want to keep that in the forefront of the council's minds, that this is something that we need to achieve.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have one thing. LD one-three-four-five, which is the senior property tax deferral legislation that we've introduced through Steve Moriarty, is in tax committee, and there's a workshop on Thursday that's supposed to start at one, but I think Shirley, as she could probably attest, when you go to one of those workshops, it may start at five, or it may start at a different time depending on when that bill is. And so, I was on the phone with Representative Moriarty this morning, and he said he's going to be monitoring that. I don't believe there's an opportunity, just like one of our workshops, for public comment, but I will keep everyone posted the moment we hear something. So, that's it for me.
Thank you.
I just have one thing, Madam Chair, is I just want to say thanks to the Historical Society, and also thanks to, there's a group in Townville that volunteered to go over and help some of our seniors.
It was the football team that went to Pete's house.
Yeah. They went to Pete's house, cleaned up a mess in his backyard. For those that don't know, Pete and I are best friends, and he's best man at my wedding. So, he's, he's got a struggle ahead of him, and he's been dealing with it. But, you know, the, what the Historical Society did was, and taking the time, and, and people like you else, and that went over, and there isn't... I know the Bitmore family is very important to me, and Bob, Pete's mom did a lot for you, and we've all known him. So, the fact that the community is giving back to somebody that... Pete had an extremely distinguished service with the FBI. When he retired, he was in charge of domestic terrorism for the entire country. As much as he traveled around the world, including a stint in Afghanistan, he'd always come home to Cumberland. He'd always, because he's pretty much a lifelong member of the fire department. He'd always attend the fire dinners. And it's, to me, it's, it's, and for him, it's important that he's still in the community. So, I just want to say thanks to, to those two groups. It really meant a lot. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
I was super excited. My son got to meet him when he took the team over to help out. And I remember the story of Pete coming home for a weekend or whatever. I think he was working for the DEA at the time. Didn't he work for the DEA for a while, for all of New England? And he had long hair, and he drove this beat-up old car. And I, you look at him and say, what's this guy doing in Cumberland? I mean, it was just, he was so out of place. But he made a visit to the middle school to talk about his work. It was a, just some, a memory I'll always have. Since our last meeting, I had a library meeting, and I'd like to inform the public that you now have access to many videos, including all the BBC shows and programming available through the library website. So if you haven't been on the library website in a while, check that out. I'd like to congratulate Thomas Bennett for his article, "Public Archaeology in Cumberland and Beyond." It appeared in this, um, this volume of the Maine Archaeological Society Incorporated bulletin, and it was very interesting. He's done a lot of work with Shell Midens at Broadcove and beyond. I had a chance to visit the Historical Society today because my dog chewed up my hat, so I had to go get a new hat. And I knew they were open on Mondays, and I could not believe the number of volunteers downstairs, just sorting through stuff, just going to town. So I want to thank all volunteers, but the volunteers at the Historical Society, and then coming outdoors, and the, the friends of the library were just going to town in the gardens at the library, and it was really... And then there was just this other couple who had their grandchildren there, just biking around the parking lot, practicing bike riding. It was hometown Cumberland. It was a great feeling. I went to Augusta for the entire afternoon and into the evening on Thursday to testify on LD two-oh-nine, which had no language. When it was introduced, it was introduced as a placeholder. And it is, the language was submitted by the Maine Bicycle Coalition. In my view, it's the trail, bicycle trail people trying to usurp the DOT's authority and not requiring them to go through the process. They're looking for a legislative decision to make it happen without going through the process. I spent hours writing a testimony. I called the clerk for the standing commit, joint standing committee, to ask about time limits. She said, "Well, they'll let you know when you come." Two minutes. I got two minutes. So, um, they have a work session on Thursday. Unfortunately, I'm unable to attend because I'm going to the GP Cog Annual Summit on Thursday afternoon. So I just share that as a report out. You all know where I stand on that. I want to thank Tig for the idea for my one-minute share. I sent out a text, "Any ideas on a one-minute share?" It feels like I used to assign impromptu speeches, "Two minutes. You have two minutes, and you talk on this topic." Well, we have one minute, and we get to choose the topic and what we have to, what we might share about. And she suggested we share about the Cumberland Crier. So Whitney, everyone's going to learn about the Cumberland Crier on Thursday. I would like to remind the public that absentee voting is available. And to thank the friendly people at the town hall desk. I brought my mom up for, she needed some notary work done this morning, so it was one-stop shopping. We hit the Historical Society Town Hall. She got the notary. She got her absentee ballot. It was a busy morning around Cumberland. I want to wish everyone a pleasant Memorial Day. I will be remembering my dad. His committal service is just following Memorial Day on June first. And, uh, I'd like to invite you all to, to the barn after, or in the afternoon. If you're driving through Cumberland, stop in the story barn and have a toast. See a picture, hear some stories of a man that was larger than life. And then my final announcement is, every year, we give, our, the Story family gives a scholarship to a hard-working senior from Cumberland, someone who may or may not be a straight A student, but someone who has the characteristics of a, of a solid citizen. And it is, I do not take part in the selection of the person because I, I know too many of the kids. My job is to blackout the names of the kids so that there's less bias when selecting the award. And the twentieth, um, Story family scholarship is going to none other than Matthew Bolduc, Chris's son. And when he was selected, I was like, I had, I don't know if, I don't think I had Matt in school, but I coached his ma... I, I had Matt in school. I didn't have Chris, but I coached Matt's mom. So, it was really nice, it's, to see the process work for, for us, for the family. And that's all I have.
Awesome. I also had absentee ballots on the list, so thank you, Shirley. And then I would just say, maybe like, great timing, it's National Public Works Week. So, with, with Chris and his son, and just a big thank you to all of our public service employees in town. They obviously plow, they salt, they clean the roads, they're patching. They're really, they're mowing, they're doing all the things that truthfully kind of probably go unnoticed because you wake up and it's done, and it's taken care of, and they're working the weird hours. So, huge thanks to them this week and always. And that's it. That's all I have. I have ten dollars. I had cash this week. Lots for tots coming your way. I will take a motion. Oh, we, I need a motion to move into executive session. Yes?
Yep. I will give you that motion, Madam Chair. I move to, uh, move to executive session pursuant to one Maine revised statutes annotated section four-oh-five-six-A regarding town managers' evaluation.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you.
I saw that.